Good evening. This is the October 20, 2021, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. Our first order of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. Motion for the approval of the agenda? Motion from Brian. Second from Dan. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor. The student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. We have more people than usual here tonight. May I have a show of hands as to how many are interested in speaking that public comment? One, two, three, four, five, I think. Okay, six maybe. All right, so we will do, we'll do three minutes apiece, public comment. Who would like to go first?
Yes, my name is-
Alexandra, I cannot see the timer. But please go ahead.
Okay. My name is Susan Richmond, 16 Cal Drive Durham. I now adult children attended Oyster River Schools from 1988 to 2000. I am here to speak in favor of the diversity, equity, inclusion justice position, and I have been a public school teacher for 30 years. What metric can tell us the emotional effects of the school experience on our students? Ibrahim Kendi offers numerical data. Low-income Black students who have at least one Black teacher in elementary school are 29% less likely to drop out of school. That's reported in the Institute of Labor Economics of March 2017. I have subjective evidence. My family's Jewish. Midway through kindergarten, not in New Hampshire, my son Sam told his teachers he changed his name to Peter. He destroyed art projects he really loved because they had his traditional Jewish family name, Sam, on them. Fast forward 35 years, my grandson, also not in New Hampshire, told his parents in December he didn't want to go to school anymore. It was too much about Christmas. Thinking again about my son when he was in high school, less overt but perhaps equally insidious, one of the Oyster River High School teachers complained to him and fellow Jewish students when they asked that a test be rescheduled so it wouldn't be given on a major Jewish holiday because they would need to miss school. And he really held on to that unfriendly response. And it helped to shape his feelings about high school. Now, my own experience is, one year I was working as a paraprofessional and served as a monitor in a study hall with students I didn't know. They were saying some pretty objectionable racially charged things, but I didn't know how to respond. If I responded the wrong way with students I didn't even know, I could cause a bigger incident. So I finally did ask for administrative assistance. There was another time that a student I did know told me about comments other students had made as a joke having to do with his ethnicity, and I felt like he was checking with me to see what my reaction would be. Was it appropriate for him to be hurt or not? And how did I read it? I told him I thought it was not okay, and again, I had administrative intervention. But I never knew if I had made matters worse for the student. And I wish I had been in a school that educated me on how to behave in these situations. I currently work one-on-one with high school students at various levels of reading difficulty. Reading is a content-neutral subject, and I obtained a book with a good reputation for helping students with reading nonfiction passages, phonics, vocabulary, comprehension. And the stories were largely about the American experience over the last 200 years. But the articles about nonwhites were ever so subtly condescending, while articles about white pioneers admired their inventiveness, industry generosity. And generally, the tone of the book was, white is the norm, and others are colorful and exotic. Luckily, I'm now sensitized enough that I stopped using that resource and instead use an excellent student's news source, Newsela, that provides articles on contemporary and historical subjects at a range of levels I can use with various students. So the content that I now use for this otherwise neutral subject includes the history of June teeth, women in the military, Reconstruction, the Dust Bowl. So if Oyster River students are taught in a single flavor, they will not be equipped for an increasingly globalized world. If we don't take note of the fact that we keep tending towards our comfort level to the experience that we've come to know is the norm, we don't realize how we may be cheating or harming our students.
Excuse me. Your three minutes are up.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Julie Kelly, and I live on Garden Lane in Durham. And I am here tonight, I'm a member of the Integrated Waste Management Advisory Committee here in Durham, as well as the District Sustainability Committee. And I'm here because I'm very interested in watching the Sustainability Plan presentation as well as the DEI presentation. I think that these two initiatives are directly linked, and I'm interested in seeing how we, as a town, as a district, can come together, bring these two very important initiatives together and work with them in tandem. Thank you.
Hi, I am Lauren Sarek. My pronouns are she and hers, and I live here in Durham. First of all, I want to say I really support the work the DEI committee has been doing. I think they've been doing an outstanding job, and I want to really support the idea of including a DEI coordinator position in the district. I'd also like to invite the PTOs to think about various microaggressions. For example, in Oyster River's Project Graduation, I've been invited to buy a Christmas wreath, something that might be fine for most people, but I don't choose to buy a Christmas wreath. Second, I'd also like to ask that at school board meetings, you consider using people's last names or titles when you refer to them? It's very confusing when there's people with similar first names if we don't know what their jobs are or job titles are. So if we could maybe return to referring to people as "school board member Howland" or "school board member Day," that would be excellent. And finally, I'd like to really thank all the teachers and the school nurses, because I know they're doing an incredibly hard job, and so I just want to say thank you to them.
Hello, my name is Paige Burt. I'm a junior at ORHS, and I'm here to speak in support of the addition of a DEIJ director to our administrative staff. I have been involved with the DEI committee for over a year now, and I know that my remaining time is limited. I have two more years to contribute what I can, and after that, I will pass my responsibilities down to an upcoming high school, to an upcoming high school student. Volunteers cannot stay on this committee forever, so it's crucial that our work is sustainable. I want to see more accomplishments to add to our tremendous progress. The addition of an administrative position would be a reliable way of keeping this work going. A trained DEI coordinator would help guide our leaders in subgroups, which will ensure that our initiatives are appropriate and necessary. There may be concerns about political bias. We have confidence that our trained coordinator will listen to the ideas of all within and outside the group resolving this concern. They would also help us to focus our efforts so we are making the most of our time and making the greatest positive impact on our community. The addition of this position wouldn't be important if the DEI work wasn't so crucial. So I would like to reiterate tonight's presenter's points that they'll be sharing for why DEI initiatives are important. If we weren't doing this work, we would be passively upholding systems of oppression like racism and homophobia within our district. Students need to feel accepted, supported, and never targeted to have a successful education. One of the DEI's goals is to educate our community and raise awareness of minority experiences. This helps achieve that sort of acceptance. This work will always be necessary, and a trained director would ensure that our initiatives and hard work will continue with stability and success. Thank you for considering my comments on why this addition would be so helpful to our district's journey of equity and anti-racism.
Thank you very much.
Jana Perkins-Howland from Durham. I'm also very excited and very much in favor of, very excited to hear about the DEI presentation this evening, and very much in favor of a DEI coordinator position. I think the last speaker said it much more eloquently than I could put it about all the opportunities, but I'm particularly excited about this because I feel that it's an opportunity for us not to be so reactive but proactive in some of these initiatives. And as I spoke about last time, there is, of course, the opportunity for us to go forward with healing, especially with marginalized or previously injured groups of folks, but also for the rest of us, what opportunities are we missing? And I think it would be good for everybody, and I'm very excited, and thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Porcellius. I live in Lee. I'm a high school parent and also someone who has worked and continues to work with many Oyster River youth in my job at the Community Church of Durham. I work particularly with many young people who identify as LGBTQ+. As a staunch ally and a parent of a gay son, I want to express how grateful I am that the district is considering creating the DEIJ director position. It's just critical that you, who are courageously and openly expressing their authentic selves, feel the support of their school peers and from the staff. As you may know, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among young people, but you might not know is that for LGBTQ youth, they are four times, that's four times, more likely to seriously consider suicide, make a plan for suicide, and attempt suicide than their peers. And Oyster River is not a stranger to this statistic, unfortunately. I know personally that many youths still painfully suffer in the hallways from peers who use inappropriate language and tell harmful jokes, what they call jokes, from staff and coaches who don't have the tools needed to support these youth, and who may be unsure how to integrate LGBTQ voices in activities and curriculum, and from our district that may confuse a larger school culture issue with isolated acts of bullying. Having someone educated and trained in our district would provide staff with the necessary training to ensure that our LGBTQ+ youth have safe spaces to be who they are openly and freely. This position could also provide important resources for parents and community members. So thank you for all who support this position and the hope that it holds for our LGBTQ youth. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We had one remote public comment submitted, Jim?
So a new option for the community is if you do have a public comment and you feel uncomfortable coming into a large gathering, you can submit your comment in writing, 250 words. We're still limited to the three minutes, like if you were here live. And so this is one that we received this week from Ms. Jana Petrokova, who lives in Lee. I have a son that goes to Moheramit. His younger brother should be going to Moheramit in two years. I would like to express my support for the sustainability initiatives in the school district. In the past two years, under the leadership of Sustainability Coordinator Maggie Morrison, the Sustainability Committee was able to commission two sustainability studies, Greenhouse Gas Inventory Report and the Sustainability Management Plan, right now in draft form. Both of these reports together give a great overview of the impact of the school district's operations and activities on environmental and possible remedies. I would also like to urge the ORCSD to take full advantage of these two comprehensive reports and great work behind them and create an actionable plan for the next five years to address sustainability in the school district. It's my hope that they will not be put on a shelf and forgotten. The science is clearly telling us that reducing greenhouse gas emissions is one of the most urgent issues of our lifetime if we want to avoid the worst impacts of climate change. I know the DEI committee is considered hiring a DEI coordinator. I urge you to consider how connected sustainability and DEI issues are and create one staff position responsible for both. Only if we have empathy and compassion for one another, regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, sexual orientation, et cetera, we can create a more resilient world and a secure, a better future for our children. It's our responsibility as a school district to do our part. We are facing difficult times, global pandemics, social and equality issues, mental health crises, changing climate. We owe it to our children to give them hope and show that we care about their future. Kind regards, Jana.
Thank you very much. All right, so we will move on to the approval of the minutes from October 6. Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 6.
We have a motion from Denise, second from Brian. Any modifications or corrections?
Yes, on page five, it's just a word. It says, "under the COVID matrix." It refers to ophthalmologists. While I think ophthalmologists probably do want the COVID numbers to be low, I believe it should be epidemiologist.
All right. All those in favor of the October 6 minutes with that correction? Please raise your hand. Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor. Those minutes are approved. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district? None? All right, and from the board, that should have been down, down-
You want to do it later?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a little bit of show and tell. Last week, I received two books in the same week from two Durham authors who live on the same street. I think this is pretty unheard of. Mike Anderson, his book, Tackling the Motivation Crisis. He's authored several books, and this has an endorsement from a superintendent named James Morse. Highly recommended. But we voted to make a special time on our meeting to recognize Chris Hall, whose book, The Writer's Mindset: Six Stages That Promote Authentic Revision, came out, I think, was it yesterday? It's the official day. This is an advanced copy. It's my good fortune to work with Chris, not as a board member, but as my other job, working for Heinemann, to work as his editor in the last stages of it. It's a great book that really looks at revision, not as a stage at the end of the writing process, but as a form of flexibility of thinking, so that you're constantly revising as you write, from the time you choose one topic over another, the time you choose a plan. So it's embedded in the entire writing process, a kind of flexibility of thinking, metacognitive thinking, being aware of options. So it's really a bold and a big book in that regard. And Chris, I don't, I don't think the editors deserve any credit for, but it's just wonderfully written, and it has your voice. And we're especially proud because, not that we had a big role as a board, but we did have the sabbatical plan, and you were in the sabbatical plan, you worked with the Heinemann Fellows, and you took your own expertise in teacher research out to the entire, you know, to a major portion of the teaching staff in the district. And so we just thought, Dan, let's recognize Chris Hall for what he's done in this book and also throughout the district. So Chris, if you could come up?
Tom, thanks for those kind words. This book came to be, as Tom was saying, because of teacher research. The spark and the fuel for the ideas in it was teacher research. And as Tom was saying, a few years ago, as part of the sabbatical, I started a teacher research group in our district, which included amazing educators from every school. And we each took a deep dive into an inquiry, into some nagging question that we wanted to explore to become better teachers. Through this action research, our goal was to see our teaching practice with fresh eyes and ultimately improve the instruction for our kids. For me, as Tom was saying, I took a hard look at revision. I looked at those student writers in my classroom who would tell me after their first draft, "I like it the way it is." Yeah. And those words always made me groan as a, you know, writing teacher, because I knew what they meant, whether they were offered like with a scowl or like hesitantly. They meant like this worksite is closed. We're not, nothing's happening here, teacher. No matter what you have to say, this, no revision is going to happen, period. And I knew how important revision was. And all of us know it. So I wanted to look at what was at the heart of this revision resistance and how I could make revision and writing in general more meaningful and engaging for kids. So through that research in my classroom and supported by the Oyster River colleagues, I started, as Tom said, see revision less as a single step in a writing process and more as something just present through all stages of writing, through the mindsets that my students were showing. It was their willingness to take a risk, for example, to think flexibly while they were writing, to take on the perspective of their readers, and to find ways to stay positive despite the snags that all of us as writers struggle with. So teacher research sparked those ideas, and it sparked that book. The work I did here in Oyster River was the fuel that kept it going. During our meetings, we forged genuine connections with one another, we built a really strong community, and we nudged each other to keep digging, keep researching, keep questioning. So I'm indebted, I'm here to say thanks, basically, to these wonderful teachers I worked with during those years of action research, and to express my gratitude to the board, to Dr. Morse, to Todd Allen, and to Jay Richard for supporting teacher research in our district.
Thank you very much. Other announcements, commendations, or comments from the board?
No, from the board?
Denise?
Yes, I was able, I wasn't able to attend the live version of the counseling, the Moheramit Counseling Open House, but fortunately, the video was posted, and so I was able to check it out. And I want to thank Karina Delcino and Brittany Prendergast. I thought they did a wonderful job of explaining the counseling program at Moheramit and just really giving a good overview of all the important work they do. And I would definitely encourage not only Moheramit parents, but really, it's relevant to the district, just to gain a better understanding of the important role that the counselors serve in our district.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to district reports.
Good evening. In our strategic plan, we've outlined the importance of restorative practices. We've highlighted by 2024, the Oyster River Cooperative School District will have tools in place that students and staff can respond appropriately and supportively to incidents of harassment and discrimination. I'm really excited to announce to all of you that beginning in November, there will be a group of K through 12 counselors, as well as school leaders and myself, that will be attending a four-day professional development around frameworks to guide restorative practices to see how they relate to the multi-tiered systems of support that we utilize, as well as the social, emotional needs and diversity, equity, and inclusion work at the district. We will leave that professional development with documents created for our school, our district, with a specific context to our needs, and we will be able to launch and continue our work with restorative practices, K through 12. It's a very exciting opportunity that will continue our work with our strategic plan and also relate directly to our MTSS work and our DEIJ work that we're also doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And the metrics update?
Hi there. You have a copy of the latest metric from Dr. Megan Harvey, and we are still obviously in substantial transmission in Stratford County, based on the new cases, 400,000. Again, above 100 is substantial, and 483 in Stratford County. The percent positive rate has gone up just about 6 tenths of a percent from last week. We're still in the moderate zone for that. Our transmission rate has stayed the same at 1.03, and our ICU capacity is 83% full. These statistics are of Monday, so she always publishes this on Monday for us. The other kind of piece of information, just to share, our surveillance testing continues to be really successful. We continue to add students and faculty and staff each week to the program. We, as you know, our school nurses have started, have started to conduct symptomatic testing. And since we started on the 4th of October with both groups with 12 days of testing, our nurses have tested 229 people. And this has allowed for either students or faculty and staff to be right back in, sometimes that same day, or the next day right away. It's saving our families a significant amount of time. They're not leaving work to try and get their kid a test. They're not paying copays, they're not going to Clear Choice and paying $215 a visit. So things continue to be really successful. Our middle school and high school are our most stressed schools, of course, with the amount of students. But our nurses are really doing an amazing job. Our collaboration with UNH continues to be very positive. We're at a PCR test at one building, so I'm going to the, to pick more up. They just have a delivery system and drive in and pick them up and then deliver them to the schools. And then our rapid tests come from the state, and I continue just to go to Concord once a month and pick those up. So everything's still going really well.
So just, I had one more piece of data, and the SAS testing in our partnership with UNH, I believe we're approaching 1,000 tests over a three-week period, and the results have been nothing short of phenomenal. Are we still at 100% zero?
Yeah, I haven't checked all schools.
1,000 children checked, zero cases. So just an incredible layer to our intervention efforts in the district.
Yeah, including staff, zero cases too, for the surveillance testing. Yeah, symptomatic testing is telling a little bit of a different story, but our surveillance testing is really going quite well, and the zero is right where we want to be. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Heather.
All right.
All right, Superintendent's report.
So we're going to do something we haven't done for a long time, which is, I'm not going to add to the superintendent's report tonight, because the superintendent's report tonight is quite rich, and we're going to start out with a presentation on our DEIJ work. And so I just wanted to share with the board that we're beginning to add the word "J" as a typical word to our work, largely to keep ourselves updated in this work. The question really was asked by Al. You know, he's been sitting on the board for 10 years, and he hears a lot of information in 10 years, and sometimes it stays between those two ears, and sometimes it's so much information that he has a hard time hanging on to it. But there's probably no work that we've done in the last four years than which we'd get more frequent and thorough reports around the work that we've been doing in the DEI. We got where we are. And so my part of the presentation is just to talk about that history. And to start with, where we are as a school system, and actually, before we actually started formally doing DEIJ work, we had a mission to engage every learner and to talk about how we reach, how we personalize that learning environment to every student. And so 10 years ago, that was being viewed through the lens of academics, are our kids successful academically? And along the way, in the early years, we started talking about what's, how are we supporting our youngsters who are, who are emerging in their sexual selves? You know, whether they're gay or whether they're identifying as a different gender. We really didn't have anything in policy, and we created, as a school system, our first trans, actually, the first transgender policy in the state of New Hampshire. And so we started realizing that if you're going to meet every, engage every learner, you have to step outside of the academic definition. And along those lines, we started talking about social, emotional learning. And all of this work was congealing as a fairly significant incident happened in the district that would only be categorized as a racial incident. And it took, quite honestly, it took me personally, professionally, a couple of months to try to figure out what the heck was going on, because, you know, we so often see ourselves as a welcoming community, as, you know, a community that supports everyone, and then this, this issue of race came up, and we had, you know, the traditional US statement of, "We won't discriminate against people," and that's a one-sentence kind of thing, and it just goes on, and everybody has it on all of their letterhead, and everybody states it on their professional documents. But what did it mean? And in this situation, it kind of woke me up to the issue that, you know, the issue of engaging every learner is bigger than academics. And so we started down a path of thinking about it more- And so we started down a path of thinking about it more broadly and how we as a system could support every child, not just academically, but emotionally as well. And that got us to this place of recognizing that race is an important issue that we should be openly discussing in the district. So about five years ago, we were 93% white. Today, I think we're about 89% white. The world is changing. We live in a white state that doesn't have the experience of dealing with people of color. It's growing, it's happening, and at the same time, we need to be proactive, because we do think as a district, and how do we deal with things, not yesterday, but tomorrow? And so we started down this path of being very deliberate about supporting children who need our support and whose parents need our support. And, you know, the interesting thing about that first year was, we recognized that finally it was a racial incident. But when I went to the data that we have to produce every single year for the federal government, and I wanted to see how many racial incidents we had dealt with as a school system, say, over the last 10 years, it was nothing. There was no record that we had ever had to deal with a racial incident in the district. And yet, it's a required element in our reporting to the federal government. How could that be? So we sat with the administrators and said, this data is just not making sense to me. Have you dealt with, you know, incidents of race in your building? And, you know, they kind of sat back and said, well, yeah, I did this and I did that. And they said, how come I don't see that in the report to the federal government? It's because the district was seeing race as bullying. It was always bullying. It wasn't race. And you needed to separate the issues out. Yes, it can be bullying, but it's also possible, it's not bullying, it's a racial incident. And so the administrative team got together, we started standardizing how we would approach our data entry, and then we met this wonderful man, Andrew Smith. And Andrew Smith, they had this, they had this issue in the university that had blown up on them in relation to race, and they had brought in a wonderful workshop. And I almost never have time to go over to the university to anything they have to offer because my day and night are so busy, but I decided this, I was going to. And I met Andrew Smith. Andrew Smith was the person in charge of disproportionate minority contact for the state of New Hampshire. Eloquent man, articulate, powerful voice, and he said, I need Andrew to talk to the entire staff and faculty of the district. And we did something kind of magical. Instead of, you know, we bring him to the high school, we bring him to the middle school, we bring him to the elementary schools, we mixed it up. Then we brought in, we had the teachers come to the town council chambers, and we had the custodians come to council chambers, then we had the cooks come to the council chambers, and we had the elementary, middle school, and high school mixed up coming to the council chambers. And I did it on purpose because I wanted to break through the stereotype, the paradigm of everybody sitting next to their buddies and being very comfortable and really not getting engaged in the presentation. Andrew had them eating out of their hand, out of his hand. He did such a fabulous job. And then we went through all of that, and of course, we then formed the first version of the DEI committee. And, you know, the committee was a reaction committee, as opposed to a pro-action committee, which we have today, but what we're trying to do is get our head around, how do we address minority issues? Now, race was certainly prevalent in the conversation, but so was religion, and so was being gay, and so was being transgender. And we held our first forum in 2017 in the cafeteria here at the high school, and it literally was standing room only. It was clear that this was an issue that this district wanted to address, they wanted to address and embrace, and so we had this tremendous, you know, start. And then like all organizations, you have this great enthusiasm, you have this great drive, and then it's sustaining the work. Because when you have volunteers, like we have on the current committee, and like we had in the first version of the committee, you're asking them to put in a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of personal sweat in terms of making sure that what we do makes sense organizationally. So we, we lost Andrew to cancer the very next year. I mean, he was going to be the person that I relied on because he was such an expert, but we lost him. And that kind of left me kind of, well, now what do I do? Because I'm not the expert on this work. I mean, just look at me. Would I be the expert on this work? They don't fit that profile. And, but I knew I needed an expert, and I was able to turn to New Hampshire Listens, and they have been a phenomenal partner with the district, and you have, and the board has your, the summary reports that they created for me over the last couple of years. Amazing people, an amazing commitment to this work. And then we had the whole influx of killings of black men and women across the country. And it seemed like every week, we were watching the death of another black man or a black woman, and as we watched the news, we were all caught off-guard by how often it was happening for the most insubstantial reasons, and horrified by what was happening across the country. And that's when the second version of the DEIJ committee resurrected itself through Shauna and Shannon and Kathy and Kristen, and they had a community sign a petition, they delivered a petition to this body, to me, probably it was 150 people on the list, thereabouts. And again, we were being reinforced as a school community to step up and step forward and learn how to be not just allies, but to learn how to be anti-racist. And so that group has been working together now. We met during the pandemic every other week, every other week. We produced documents, updated documents, coordinated our work, and the committee has, you know, the usual suspects, our teachers and our administrators, we have board members, then we have these amazing community members, and unlike the first one, we actually have the student voice. And the student voice has been so inspiring to the grownups, because they are living the day-to-day life that we talk about. And, you know, you heard from Paige tonight, if Zoe was here, she'd be as eloquent. Oh, Zoe is here. You know, we have Caroline from the middle school. The student voice has been so empowering to the grownups. And the most wonderful thing about the student voice is, almost always, they don't filter what they say, whereas grownups tend to filter what they say. And so we get raw truth. You know, when we talk about the word authentic, it is the students that are bringing that voice to the table. So it's been almost a five-year journey, Al, and I think, you know, as a system, the school board has been so amazingly supportive of this work, the community's been incredibly supportive of this work, and we have a lot of work to do. And so, having said that, I'm going to shift over to Suzanne.
Did that work? Yeah? Did that work? Yeah?
Thank you. So some of the work that we've been doing today for, within this school year, really, a lot of it has focused around HB2. It was something that happened over the summer, really, and has influenced the work that members of the committee have been working on, specifically the teacher group and the leadership here. The faculty and staff began the school year with Dr. Morse on one of the teacher workshop days, really talking, he spoke with them about HB2, about what it, what the law says and what the impacts could be for them. That followed with Megan Glenn, our attorney, coming to speak with, with the faculty and also with all of you as well. Jim sent letters to the family, the faculty, and the staff regarding the district's work on DEI and the sustained dedication to that work, as well, you all wrote the resolution, the school board wrote the resolution regarding the district's work and dedication to the work around DEIJ. And recently, which is also in your packet, I have worked with the principals and some teachers, some faculty members, to create an internal process if there is a complaint that is heard, whether it's reported to a teacher or whether it's reported to a member of the leadership team. And included in that are examples of templates for teachers for their lesson plans if they choose to use one of those. They're not, we're not requiring teachers to use a lesson plan, and there are a lot of different types of lesson plans, but some of the faculty were asking us to provide some examples of what that could look like, and so we've included that as well. And that's something that we will be talking and rolling out with faculty soon. Along with that, we continue to work with New Hampshire Listens, and I have recently met with Carrie to talk about what some of that work will look like, and that will happen throughout this school year. It'll occur within the schools themselves, and we will work with the leadership at the school buildings to, to talk about how we're going to roll that out throughout the school year. They will continue to work with our community group, and they will also work with the leadership team. That, that work that occurred over the summertime that Dr. Morse alluded to also included a very robust report, and it's a working report that supports the dialogue among educators around the DEI work that we're doing. And that document is also included, which I believe you've all seen. The DEIJ goals for the future really are multilayered, but just to keep it as a broad stroke for the purposes of this meeting, because I could go on and on and on about our goals, but we're really talking about communication, we're talking about community, curriculum and instruction, and really celebration. And that's really when I think of all of our goals that we've been talking about, those things stand out. Workshops, curriculum analysis, to be more specific, as well as the position that people have been talking about this evening that we will also talk about later on. The next slide talks about some of the recommendations related to the, related to the work that we're doing today. We would like to have two community events. They would occur in the wintertime, and really, they are an opportunity to bring the community together to talk about a variety of things that are related to diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice. And so we are seeking the board's approval to proceed with event planning for these two events, and there's a brief outline for you about what they entail. We haven't gotten into the details of exactly what it's going to look like, but once we know that this, that these events are possible, we'll get into the details and to make it happen. Any questions for me? Great, thank you.
So then we're going to hear from faculty first.
It is often said that educators should be neutral, but there's no such thing as neutrality in education. As explained in the book, Is Everybody Really Equal?, historically, schools are not now, nor have they ever been neutral. It explains that it is the job of schools to prepare students for citizenship by educating them about the world, providing many perspectives, and helping them embrace the struggle of wrestling with challenging ideas. Everything teachers include in their curriculum or don't include in their curriculum is a statement about what matters. There isn't a way for us to be neutral. Instead of holding on to an illusion of neutrality, we need to instead hone our skills in facilitating healthy, age-appropriate, safe learning opportunities surrounding DEIJ. Children as young as two years old pick up on invisible elements of our social world. They notice skin color and they ask questions. Elementary school teachers need the tools, language, and resources to help students see themselves in their curriculum. Students at the middle school level are talking about race and identity all on their own. The question isn't whether the conversations are happening, it's whether they're happening in the hallways, or if they're happening in a safe, developmentally appropriate, healing class community where they have factual information and emotional support. Students at the high school level are honing their skills to be the future leaders of our communities, and they're asking for these issues to be centered so that they can better understand, lead, and envision their futures. Each day, teachers K through 12 are met with a challenge of navigating student questions, facilitating discussions, helping students problem-solve disagreements with peers. Many teachers are spending prep periods, nights, weekends, and summer hours researching ways to shift their curriculums to meet the needs of their students regarding their questions about identity and social issues, and we often end up with just more questions. If we had a DEIJ coordinator, they could push into our classrooms to demonstrate lessons, facilitate discussions, offer well-vetted resources, answer our questions, help us find developmentally appropriate, safe, validating ways to support our incredibly diverse student body. They would aid in settling the internal struggles so many teachers have about how best to approach these topics. They would be the facilitator of the healing that is needed right now. There's a reason why Oyster River is a great place to be. It's because we invest in the resources and the people needed to drive change. This role will have a tremendous impact, not just on students and teachers, but on further developing the community that we love.
Kira, can you just introduce us, how up in the building you work in?
I'm Kira, and I teach 5th grade at Oyster River Middle School.
Thank you.
My name is Shannon Brown. I am a resident of Five Gears Drive in Durham. I'm going to start with a quote from Adrienne Rich. When someone, with the authority of a teacher say, describes the world and you are not in it, there's a moment of psychic disequilibrium, as if you looked into a mirror and saw nothing. Yet you know you exist, and others like you, that this is a game done with mirrors. It takes some strength of soul, and not just individual strength, but collective understanding, to resist this void and to stand up demanding to be seen and heard. My name is Shannon, I'm a Durham resident. My fiancee Lynn and I have three children in the district. We are a blended family with two queer working parents, two adopted kids, one of whom is multiracial, one biological child. We are decidedly middle-class, pretty much agnostic, most of us are Buffalo Bills fans, and we have an intense love affair with the Durham community and the seacoast. Almost always, when our children look into the mirror of their educational experience in Oyster River, they see themselves reflected back, but sometimes they don't. And this is not because anyone has intentionally left them out of the narrative, but when we do discover that a child does not feel a part of the narrative because the way a story has been told, either through words, visuals, actions, or curriculum, it's the responsibility of the educator, and I use that word broadly, to stretch the narrative, to include the student who has been historically left out of the story about what is typical, what is valued, and what is good. When the incident occurred that Dr. Morse talked about, related to the bus, my multiracial son was in the same classes in Massway as the boy who was targeted on the bus. And understandably, my son and our whole family was very shaken up. Well before that incident, we had talked about race and racism with our kids, but until that incident happened, racism felt like something that happened in other places, certainly not at Oyster River. After that incident, though, it was real to them, it was in our community. And we had to have a very frank and heartbreaking conversation with our son about being, about the inherent risk of being a black boy in our country. Since that incident, so much progress has been made in our community and within Oyster River and School District to make sure every learner is valued and engaged, and that the teachers and staff who support our learners are prepared for this work. Our partnership with New Hampshire Listens was instrumental in ensuring thoughtful progress, and many community members, staff, and teachers took on tasks and the emotional work to make sure we engage every learner. The work is not done, though, and if we are going to further the progress we've made, we need to make sure this work is embedded in the district and not just an add-on to someone's already full-time job. Additionally, the work ahead is not only about race and racism, it is about gender, and social class, and religion, and ability, national origin, and so much more. For those reasons, I implore the school board to endorse the creation of a Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Justice, so that every single learner, and their families, and teachers and staff, will hold up that mirror and see their unique, complex, and beautiful selves reflected back. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoe?
Hello, my name is Zoe. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm a junior at the high school. The DEIJ work matters because students need to feel respected and supported in order to have our best possible career at Oyster River. To have a well-rounded education and to gain a deeper understanding of ourselves, each other, and the world we live in, we to gain a deeper understanding of ourselves, each other and the world we live in, we need to learn from multiple perspectives. Unfortunately, this is not what we've been getting. My teachers have never been taught how to educate us about non-white, non-heterosexual narratives. And for many of my teachers, the idea to do this hasn't even crossed their mind. Only learning about one kind of person, one who many of us can't fully relate to, makes many students feel alone in our struggles. One student of color shared with me that, quote, "In a primarily white school district, it can be very isolating as a student of color." Knowing that there are other people who care about these issues and having someone to talk to is very important in making sure I feel seen. Teaching a broader array of perspectives is also made critical by our district's majority white and heterosexual population. Teaching students about the unique struggles of our peers will foster a more empathetic and understanding school environment. Also, the values we're taught at Oyster River will stay with us for our entire lives, so it's important that we learn respect and compassion for groups other than our own. Many people talk about unlearning prejudices, but all of these prejudices were learned from somewhere, and most of the time that's school. Spreading DEIJ work to the youngest in our district will help my generation and the ones after to be anti-racist and inclusive. Luckily, I have seen a lot of progress since the creation of the DEIJ committee. Many of my teachers have taught more diverse viewpoints in their classes than teachers in past years, and have shown an interest in learning about how they can be more inclusive of all students. For example, right now in my French class, we're learning about marriage, and several of the readings my teachers provided incorporate discussions of gay marriage. Just a few years ago, I never would have thought that this could be possible in Oyster River, especially not in such an inclusive way. This communicates to LGBT students in my class that our teacher cares about our unique experiences and provides us a safe space. The student body has also become more accepted. Our role models, teachers, setting a tone of inclusion throughout our school encourages us to do the same. I've seen much fewer instances of casual racism and homophobia, and have seen an increase in students correcting their friends when they do make a prejudiced comment. That said, there is still lots of room to improve. Our curriculums are still unbalanced in their coverage of various races and genders. Many teachers are trying but haven't received enough guidance to successfully implement practices into their classrooms that truly make marginalized students feel comfortable. My teachers need a knowledgeable person to lead them and give suggestions on how to effectively carry out DEIJ initiatives. I've learned from Oyster River that there's always more room to learn and grow. We're making progress, but we're still only beginning our journey towards truly meeting our goals of diversity, equity, inclusion and justice. Thank you.
So Michael asked for this presentation tonight because we are leaning into budget season, and Al wanted the comprehensive piece because so much of this has been presented to the board over the years in pieces. So our goal tonight was to present a holistic presentation leading up to the justification in the budget process, which the board will be talking about for the next several months in relation to the need for a Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Justice. So I think you've heard tonight, you know, tremendous amount of work has been done, a lot more, as we quote Zoe, a lot more yet to be done. Teachers are looking for an administrator who is skilled, that can support them, who has the knowledge, who can go into their classrooms. Students are looking for support from an administrator who can guide them through difficult discussions. The community is looking for an administrator who can do comprehensive presentations and be able to talk eloquently about, you know, what's happening in our district, our state and our world, and to be able to answer questions in terms of the relevancy of the work that we've been doing. Truly boils down to the energy of the community around this issue has exceeded the capacity of the district to meet the demand. And as you've heard tonight, tremendous demand, absolutely necessary work. And I want to thank the board for providing this vehicle tonight for us to update you and look forward to the conversations during budget season about the creation of this position.
Denise?
I just want to say, as one of two board members on the committee, first of all, thank you to our presenters tonight. Awesome job. And I have been so honored to be on this committee because Dr. Morris used the word authentic, and I couldn't agree more. The student voice has been incredible, but also those of you who are community members and faculty, I mean, across the board, people have stepped up and shared, you know, their experiences, which takes courage. And I have learned a lot from being on this committee and very much appreciate the opportunity to be part of the work, and I look forward to continuing.
Al?
So I did ask Jim, we were sitting at one of our finance committees, and there's, of course, we're the bean counters, so we're always looking at the list of positions that are being placed on there. And what really struck me is Jim is like, yeah, we've been doing this work for five years or six years. And I was like, Jim, I mean, I may have the beginning of dementia hitting me, but I've been here the whole time. I've been here when Durham became the first town to become Indigenous Persons Day. I was here for the transgender bathroom controversy and the transgender policy. I've been here for the anti-racism policy. I've been here responding to the, you know, divisive concepts, the lawsuit that we joined in with CONVAL against the unfair funding system for schools. And I'm like, Jim, I feel like I've been reacting for five years. I just don't know how any of this fits together. And so it kind of bothered me for a long time as I thought about it. And then when we got this presentation embedded in it is the New Hampshire REEDs work that's been going on. So it was like, it gave everybody's perspective. And so it had, there's the students' perspective, there's the teachers' perspective, and there's the administrators' perspective. And then there's one perspective that's not represented in the whole report. And it's alluded to in the report when it talks about our anti-racism policy and is this really a good policy? And so the group that's really not embedded in this work is us, the school board. Our perspective or our learning or our training on anti-racism, that, I mean, I've had one long ago with Andrew Smith, five years ago, but nothing in five years. And so if this work is supposed to be sustained, and if you're going to come forward and ask for positions and support and policies and all that, how, and I've heard like teachers aren't trained to deal with this, or administrators aren't trained to deal with this, but somehow it's expected that those of us sitting around this table somehow innately learned all this stuff. We're not trained either. And so in order for this work to be suc-, and by the way, we change or evolve over time on a three-year cycle. So it's like, it makes it so that the DEI training seems detached for us. It's like, it's one more thing on the agenda. It's like I can check off I've done DEI, next I go to the budget stuff. But if I really learned anything, or am I really equipped when a policy comes forward to really look through it through the lens of the DEIJ? And the answer is no. And so that has to change. It has to be that there's, that maybe we have a workshop with the board where we do have training, but it's just not a sustainable model the way it's currently built. It's like, it's too detached from the governing body. And I've heard over and over again how the board has supported this, and yeah, we have supported this, but I think the board needs support as well. We need the training and that to adapt to make this a successful program. So that's my two cents.
Good two cents.
Jim, are you looking for discussion or endorsement of what Suzanne discussed regarding the community events?
Yeah, if we could just take an action by the board that you're authorizing the community events, UC and the leadership group are working on developing those two events. We're hoping to get one off in November and the second one off in February. So I know that Michael, as an example, you had indicated that you'd like to also hold some community events, and we just wanted to make sure that we didn't take all the board's airtime and balanced it between the DEI workshops and what you were hoping to achieve as a school board. So if you could authorize these two, then we can move forward and build the plan that we need to build in order to bring in the community.
I wonder if maybe Suzanne could come back up and discuss a little bit more, in a little bit more detail, the goals of each of the proposed events and why structured this way.
I think UC, I think UC's been very involved with that, as have others that are here. So I think UC, maybe we can do this together if you'd like. So I know that the idea is that we would have, the table talk would be more of a facilitated conversation with people in the community as well as, as well, well, with people in the community. But I'm not sure if we've defined that anymore.
As context, different districts are, you know, are approaching this in different ways. I attended an event in neighboring district that was solely described as a DEIJ presentation. And what happened is the administration and faculty members ate all together, were on the stage, and they spent the first hour presenting. And there was only a half an hour for questions later. It was already politicized, it was already divisive, and there were, you know, signs for support. There were loud voices in support and against. And when each question from the audience, which came up on a card, was read out, it wasn't, you know, the folks on the stage were having to react, and they didn't know who was going to respond to it. And it turned into something that was more divisive, from my view, than unifying. Because there would be a question that was, you know, rather eloquent, like, is too much of a focus on equity in the classroom ever better? What a rich lead-in to a respectful dialogue where, you know, where you could really describe like what was happening and understand the reasons for the question, but it didn't have any chance to be answered. One of the members simply said, no, there's no danger. The supporters of DEIJ sort of applauded, and it really annoyed those that were agnostic or skeptical about it. So came away thinking that the presentation model where, you know, it's sort of talking to might not be the best fit for where we are, and that sort of smaller table talks would be more appropriate in starting to, you know, to sort of generate the actual respectful listening and dialogue that we're looking for to heal our community, to bring our community together. So that said, the planning, we're still talking with different stakeholders and understanding how New Hampshire Listens could help facilitate some of these smaller, authentic conversations. And then possibly one output of that first convening could be questions that then the administration and faculty are able to respond to in a measured and thoughtful way. So, you know, instead of anticipating what the community would be worried about or what questions might arise, that first event would be small discussions that generate those questions that the administration would then have a chance to, you know, the district would have a chance to answer. This is what's really going on. So again, early stages of conversation about what those events could be, there's still work to be done there. But if we could, you know, receive the board's support to go forward with planning in a busy schedule this year, that would be appreciated.
And New Hampshire's Listens has agreed to support the work with, that we would be doing with these two.
And this is, they've worked with us in this particular topic, but their wheelhouse is working with different communities around very contentious topics and being able to, through readings and facilitation, not reach agreement, but reach understanding.
Looking for a motion?
So I think from a, from a board perspective, these things do take a considerable amount of time to put together, and we don't have any other, we don't have any other forums on the calendar in this time period at this point in time. In particular, the January, February time period is when we're doing, you know, the business of the district with regards to budget hearings and whatnot. So I don't think it's likely that the board would be doing that. And to be clear, this is not, this would not be a board, these would not be school board events, right? These are, these are-
They're district events.
District events, but they're not, yeah, yeah. Tom?
So I'll make a motion to approve these two community events as presented.
I have a motion from Tom.
Oh, second?
Second from Denise. Any discussion?
I just think they're well thought out in terms of how they interrelate. You know, these are not just two events. One leads to the other, and I think that's, that's, you know, very thoughtfully done.
And just as far as this connects to the director's position, in that, we live in a wonderful community, and there's a range of, you know, of political views, there's a range of sort of focus that different families have put in on, into this. And a director who is, whose role is to have these types of discussions and help, the district is not trying to replace families. The district, we're in working with kids, helping, you know, just, there's more that unifies in terms of treating each other with respect and being open-minded and understanding and empathizing. So I understand, I got a little bit away from the events, but the point is that there's, that more unites and divides us, these events are a start, and DEIJ resource in the future will be able to keep other communities strong.
Other discussion? All right, so the motion is to approve the events as presented? So all in favor? Seven in favor and a student up in favor.
Thank you, Michael.
And just to clarify, I do appreciate that the discussion about the proposed director position as well. I think that the board will dig into that more as part of the budget process over the next, you said several months. I hope it's not several months.
This is October, usually finished the end of December.
It'll feel like several months.
That's true. Tom is right. So I think this is good background as we enter that process and that discussion, and I appreciate the variety of voices that go into that process. So, thank you.
And Jim, you had thoughts on the job description. Did you want me to share those now, or are we?
Now, we can wait, because just a timing, but thank you, UC. So I'd like to shift, Michael, if that's okay?
Yes.
So Andy is here, and, you know, Lethro, our athletic director, and he wants to go over the winter recommended guidelines as impacted by COVID. Most of this will not catch the board off guard. It's very similar to what we have done successfully in the district in the past. So Andy?
Alexander, can you help me get this? What's that? Yeah, I don't know if that's a replay. Thanks for having me. Just, oh, sorry.
Yeah, plug it in.
Oh, probably. Thank you. All right, before I get into the winter protocols, I just wanted to give everyone an update on the, on the fall. We're winding down. We have, you know, about a week left or a couple of weeks left getting into tournament season. Things have gone great. You know, I'd like to commend our coaches, our athletes, our parents have done a fantastic job. We have had zero shutdowns of any teams because of COVID. I think that has a lot to do with our, you know, our mitigation protocols that we have in place and the ability of our athletes and parents and coaches to follow them. That's a claim that I don't think that every school district in New Hampshire can make. We have seen some teams that have had to shut down, and we've had to reschedule games with teams that have had to shut down. So it's been very successful, and we've been really pleased with how it's gone so far. So. Thank you. I think you guys have a copy of this, right? I, the things that I put in bold are, it's, a lot of things are very similar to the fall. Things in bold are actually going to be a little different than they were last winter. The, you know, we added some language. If a school district has experienced a cluster outbreak, that we obviously would not be playing them during that time, but we would do every, make every effort that we can to reschedule that game. Our, we're asking, and I'll get more to the spectators as we get down there, but we're asking the spectators, in the winter, we have several different venues. We have the gymnasium where we play basketball. We have the Whittmore Center where we play ice hockey. ice hockey, Jackson's Landing, Churchill Rank where we play ice hockey, Dover Arena where we play, we're all over the place, swimming, indoor track, we're all over the place. So what we're, you know, we're proposing that we do is we ask that our spectators follow the protocols that are specific to the venue. So for example, here in our gymnasium, we would ask our spectators to wear masks at all times, as they would if they entered the building during the school day. So we're, so that's what our thoughts are with our spectators, is to, you know, follow the venue rules. As far as during play, we've done, you know, we've gone through, I won't go through everything, but, you know, we've, we have some, you know, some protocol for each individual sport. But I think what you'll see, the, you know, kind of the main thing with the masks is that, very similar to volleyball, is that we, you know, we'll wear them on the sidelines, but when they're actively engaged in play, they would remove them, similar to what we've done with, with volleyball. Spectator protocol, one thing that we did, that I did add for our gymnasium is I would like to kind of have some authority, you know, with your backing. With some of the games in the gym, we have some teams that travel pretty well and like to bring a lot of spectators, and for us to, you know, to be able to, you know, have, our fans have the ability to have that three-foot social distancing, we need to kind of limit that. Most games, it's not an issue. When we play some rivalry games, you know, that, it can tend to get pretty packed in there. So I just would like to have the ability to, with those games, to, to limit the amount of spectators in certain games, and ask, you know, we'll have tickets, and that would be made, you know, made clear to parents and obviously the other team, and, you know, our spectators well in advance. So, you know, and again, spectators going to pools, indoor tracks, ice arenas, practices, for meets, would be required to follow their venue-specific guidelines, so.
Andy, did we use tickets last year, last winter?
Well, last winter, we, well, we did, last winter, we only allowed parents in.
Okay.
So we didn't have that rule, and obviously outside this fall, we didn't, we kind of got away from that last spring. In the middle of the spring, we kind of, you know, laid off of that requirement, but, you know, there's going to be times in our gymnasium this winter where I feel like I need to, you know, just to keep things at a safe amount of people in there that we may have to limit. But for the most part, I think it's, it's, we're well within the range of spectators.
Andy, when you decide that tickets are necessary, are both teams going to get equal number of tickets to distribute?
So I, so I did that this once this fall, and we gave four tickets to each one of our players, and we gave four tickets to the opposing team's players. Since it was our home game, we did do an additional 30 tickets for our student body, which, being our home game, I think it's fair. And, you know, our kids didn't get to see their peers play much last year, so, you know, it worked, that worked out well for that game. So, and, you know, I think that, I think the opposing team was appreciative too, because some of their students were, were able to come, you know, they may not have given the parents a ticket, you know, they could give it to whoever they wanted, but that just, with the size of our gym and our bleachers, I think that's just something that would be important to have in place, the ability to, to limit.
I wanted to ask about the venues that are not here.
Yep.
So I think you cited the WIT, and you mentioned indoor track, so that's up at the Field House, and swimming, are those all confirmed that we have access to the UNH?
So, so for indoor track, I just got word that we're going to be at least able to practice there. There'll be some, they haven't given me the, the specific guidelines for the indoor track. The Whitemore Center, everybody's masked in the Whitemore Center to be there. So I'm assuming the indoor track will be similar, except for when they're, you know, obviously when they're running, they'll be able to take them off. But, and the pool, we haven't got total confirmation, I'm fairly confident that, you know, we'll at least be able to train there. I don't know what's going to happen with meets. They're, across the state, we don't know what's going to happen with swim meets. Those are, those are, I mean, those, there's a lot of people in, in one venue for those, those meets, but, so those, those two are kind of still a little bit up in the air, but I would expect, you know, being over at UNH, that they'll, they'll ask for masks on.
Yeah, but you're planning as if those are all going to proceed, and we'll be able to have those seasons.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, in some form or fashion, we'll have indoor track and swimming.
Yeah. All right, Dan?
So I guess on that same topic, the impact of our lack of a middle school gym for the bulk of the winter, I'm not sure what they would be, but do you anticipate looking for alternate sites to host basketball, for example, or do you think we have the capacity in-house with the high school?
Yeah, we're working, we're working on that for, to carve out some time for the middle school. We realize that they don't, they have nowhere to go. I think what we're, one of the things that we're going to try to do is to really go heavy with middle school basketball in November before the high school even starts, get them in there and get them some time. And then, you know, we're going to have to carve out some time, you know, only having one gym in the district right now. There really, it's hard to find gyms out there, you know, to, you know, for our teams to go, so, you know, I think we will be able to absorb the middle school, it'll be tough, but we'll get them.
And then, just one, one other, on the issue of the protocols, I believe last winter, we only scheduled games with other districts that had certain minimum levels of protocols consistent with ours. Are we going to continue that practice?
So we did that last year because the NHIA didn't have a, they had, they had more protocol themselves in place, and they, now we are back to the regular schedule with them. So we're playing a regular Division II schedule. We have an agreement with athletic, amongst athletic directors that, you know, we, you know, we would follow, you know, if we, someone comes to Oyster River's gymnasium, they're going to put masks on on the sidelines if that's what we, you know, what our rules are, and vice versa.
So I guess the concern then would be for away games?
Yeah.
It sounds like there's not necessarily going to be a certain minimum maintained in terms of protocols for our athletes and our fans.
Well, our athletes at away games would be expected to follow our protocol.
Okay. But others, others in attendance wouldn't necessarily follow.
Spectators, no.
That's just something we should make abundantly clear to the students and the families.
Yeah, that, yeah, that our student athletes is what we would control, and when they go to an away game, they need to wear masks on the sidelines, you know, with this protocol. Can't speak for the other team on the sideline, but, you know, our, our kids would.
And I just, I guess one follow-up to that is I would, I would want to make sure that there's no NHIAA penalty for an athlete who elects not to participate.
No.
So for example, we know that they can't skip an NHIAA-approved event for practice for something else. We just want to make sure that that didn't apply in this case.
No, there wouldn't be, in fact, the NHIA, the one thing that they have put in place this year, if there is a game that there's a COVID shutdown by a team, and that if you're, if you've exhausted all possibilities and not able to reschedule it, it becomes a no play. Where in the past, that if, you know, if you don't reschedule a game, the team that doesn't reschedule it, or, you know, they both would get a forfeit. So that doesn't, you know, that's, that's out for COVID, so. They have put that in place, but they wouldn't, they, the only, the only penalty is that a athlete would have for missing a game would be to go to another outside team's game or practice. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't be penalized now.
Okay. Tom?
Of course, I'd like to say just how much I appreciate your, we're going back to the difficult times, you know, last fall, you know, how, how well you've handled this, Andy, how much I appreciate that. And I'd just like to make a motion to approve the winter sports COVID-19 mitigation guidelines as presented.
I have a motion from Tom, second from Brian. Any other discussion? I wanted to check in with Olivia as a student rep to see if you have any insight or questions for Mr. Lethro.
I don't have any questions, I think I read through everything, and I think that it all looks super well, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Olivia.
Other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the winter sports guidelines as presented? Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
And then just lastly, Michael, in my piece, the communication survey from UNH. So we got a definitive answer from our attorney that we could release our information to the university to conduct the survey, Josh is in the process of releasing that information. And then, once Andy Smith from the university has the information, he said it'll be short order in getting it out. So we're in a good place to release the survey.
All right.
Now I'd invite Sue and Maggie up.
Good evening. Tonight, we have a report, I'm going to let Maggie introduce May. We were hoping she could be here, but I think she's taped her report, so you can view it, and Sandy's going to run it for us, and then we're going to talk with Meg, I think, right? Uh, yes. So this is all a technical miracle, that she recorded this. Meg Malone was our UNH intern with the UNH Sustainability Institute this past summer. Her job, responsibility was to develop a sustainability management report, and she will explain that in her presentation. It was a great opportunity for us to really partner with the Sustainability Institute. Meg graduated from the University of Dayton, and now, as a graduate student, and now serves as a sustainability director for the city of Dayton. So she did all of her work remotely from Dayton, Ohio. So hopefully we'll have Meg.
I wonder if we want to move on and give Alexander a chance to work on that, and we can circle back in a few minutes? Okay, that's what we'll do. All right, so we will come back to the sustainability report, and that brings us to the student representative report.
Hi again. So I just wanted to say again, thank you to Andy for all the work that he's done with fall sports so far. All the seasons have been going really well, and everything's looking really good. We just had the field hockey senior night last week, and then girls soccer last night, and then boys soccer will be on Friday night, and then playoffs will follow that, for soccer at least. Upcoming is a club fair that's going to be held during advisory and flex, where all of the different clubs and organizations will get to have a table and basically be like, tell them what it's about, so that everybody can walk, each grade can walk around and get to see all the different, like, clubs. So I think that's a very exciting thing, so then everybody can get to know each of the different clubs, because we have a lot to offer. Student government elections just happened earlier this week, and I think we'll find out results soon, I'm not sure the exact date, but voting happened on, started happening on Tuesday, Monday, Monday, Tuesday, one of those days. And we watched all their videos, and it was really well-done by all the students. And speaking of clubs, at the end of this week is the NHS induction for the past members, which is the first in-person induction for NHS that we've been able to do since COVID, which is very exciting. And, yeah, I also wanted to thank the students who came to speak tonight, you guys did a very good job, and I'm proud of y'all. Yeah, do you guys have any other questions?
Just wondering how the schedule is going, how do you find the schedule working out this year?
It's been a busy year, getting back into in-person and stuff, but overall, I feel like the schedule, the flow of it is fairly well. It's nice not having like the waterfall, like, effect of the blue-white Bobcat, and how like, every Monday will be a blue day, every Tuesday will be a white day, I like that a lot. Personally, the Bobcat days have been a little much having every single class, but that's just like a getting used to thing again, since we haven't had that in like, like, a year or two, so. But overall, I think it's going fairly well. The other thing is not having flex every single day, that would be the only thing that I think is, not necessarily a negative, but it's definitely a change.
All right, thank you very much. So we're going to, we're going to try Meg's presentation again.
Hello, my name is Meg Malone, and this summer, I served as the Sustainability Fellow for the Oyster River Whitemore School District. This fellowship was a partnership with the University of New Hampshire Sustainability Fellows Program. And a little background on myself, so I just graduated with my masters from the University of Dayton, and I got my masters in sustainability, and now I work at the city of Dayton as their sustainability specialist. And this summer, I created a management plan, which I'm going to talk to you all about tonight. So what is a sustainability management plan? We have been seeing sustainability management plans completed by school districts across the country for the bass, for the past 20 years, and school districts have numerous reasons why they have been completing their management plans. Not only are they a strategic way to limit our greenhouse gas emissions, but they can also save money for the district. So we see energy efficiency programs, we see programs that limit waste and water usage, which rack up savings for the school, but also encourages sustainable practices and curbs emissions. In addition, this aids students in educating them about climate change. A lot of students graduate from high school, and they're not as well-versed in what climate change is, so by creating a sustainability management plan, you start doing practices within your schools to educate students about how to live sustainable lives, so that way, when they leave the district, they're more informed about how to incorporate these practices in their daily lives. It also complements national and global initiatives. We have seen countries committing to curbing their carbon emissions at the COP conferences, we've seen them at, through agreements through the United Nations, but we've also seen several federal initiatives take place to help, and commitments taken to help curb our greenhouse gas emissions. And lastly, we see this complement diversity, equity, inclusion works, work because the people that are most impacted by climate change are often our most vulnerable communities. And so by educating about climate change, we're also educating about the importance of thinking about diversity, equity, and inclusion when we're living sustainable lives. So in this management plan, we have kind of three main aspects that I will be talking about tonight. First, I will be talking about our sustainability strategies, or the strategies that we input, that we are planning on implementing in order to curb our emissions and educate our students and save the district money. The second one is about sustainability curriculum and how to educate students about sustainability and the work that's being done within the district, and how this complements some of the diversity, equity, and inclusion work that's been taking place. And lastly, a stakeholder engagement plan, so how are we going to get people bought in into this plan? How are we going to get people working with it and continuing to push it as we try and achieve some of these goals? So first, I'm going to brief you about kind of the process I went through in order to create this management plan, and then we'll kind of get into the meaty-gritty details of the plan itself. So as you probably saw, as you went through the plan, we had a methodology that we kind of created in order to create a concrete plan. So the first step of my time with Oyster River was I met with an internal group of stakeholders that Maggie Morrison- stakeholders that Maggie Morrison had put together to talk through kind of what the needs were of this management plan. Why did you ask me to come here this summer? What were people hoping to get out of the plan? And from that internal group, what I did is I went through and found over 50 plans that other districts have created across the country. And I kind of diluted it down to the best 10 plans that I found. And I presented those 10 plans to my internal stakeholder team and asked them to read through them and kind of pick out the things they liked and picked out the things they didn't like to kind of encourage a good framework for the Oyster River Plan. And so what we did is after talking through all these plans, we created a general framework of how we were going to have the plan work and what it was going to look like. After that, I then had one-on-one sessions with school sustainability leaders or people that are involved in sustainable initiatives, whether that's through the strategic plan or through other education or other ways. So I met with transportation, I met with child nutrition, I met with energy. And I said, hey, what are some strategies that we can incorporate into this district to help make a really concrete plan? And from there, we kind of came up with some strategies. I would come in with what other districts have been doing and say, hey, do you think this is feasible? And from there, we kind of pared down what strategies we thought were best for Oyster River. Then I went to the local stakeholders within the community, so parents, people within the city, the University of New Hampshire, people that are working with energy on a state level. Maggie put together a really excellent group, a very diverse minds, to kind of look through this plan and give me feedback about what they thought was really good and what maybe I should change. And then from that feedback, I gave that feedback to the internal group, they gave me more feedback, and then I kind of reviewed all that stakeholder feedback to create the product that you're seeing today. So Maggie and I talked in depth about anchoring this plan in a framework that both complements initiatives that are happening on a global level and that are happening on a local level. So what I did first was I talked to those five school districts that we found that the plans we liked the best. And I met with those districts and I said, hey, like, what do you think about these plans? And they kind of gave me some feedback and they also gave me some really good feedback about framework. And so what I did was I rooted this plan in the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. So the United Nations created 17 goals that they want the world to achieve by 2030 in order to be more sustainable. And the school districts that I had talked to, a lot of them rooted their sustainability management plans in these Sustainable Development Goals as well, because no matter who you talk to across the country or across the globe that's involved in sustainability, everyone knows for the most part about the Sustainable Development Goals. So you'll see in the strategy that we have, we have put the Sustainable Development Goals within each of the focus areas. In addition, we wanted to root it in these local initiatives as well. So the school district has already established the strategic plan and the sustainability tenants. The sustainability tenants were established by the Sustainability Committee. And all of these focus areas are also rooted in goals that are set in the strategic plan and goals that are set in the sustainability tenants. So we kind of set this framework, both with the Sustainable Development Goals and these local initiatives happening at Oyster River, to kind of anchor our management plan. And then from that, after having conversations with both our local stakeholder group and also this external group of district, school districts that I met with over the summer, we established our, the focus areas that we thought that Oyster River should focus on. So you can see they are energy, construction and land use, waste, health and wellness, transportation, diversity, equity, inclusion, and curriculum. So all of our strategies that we want to accomplish within the next five to 10 years are rooted in these focus areas that are then kind of anchored in these, this framework. So when you dive into the plan, what you're going to see is first, you're going to see them broken up into chapter by focus area. So we jump into the first chapter, which is energy. We're going to see a page that kind of goes through the history of energy at Oyster River. So talking about sustainable projects that have been completed. We're going to see kind of the momentum that has been done, but also talking about where we still need to go. We also see an explanation of benefits that these strategies will give to Oyster River, kind of going back to those initial benefits that I talked to about why districts do this plan. And then we also have our key performance metrics or what we're going to track along the way to ensure that we're hitting our goals that are set in the strategy. When you jump into a section, what you're going to see is a page that looks like this. You're going to see each section, so I just pulled a page from construction and land use, so chapter two. We're going to see an overall objective for the section. We are going to see a goal, so there are multiple goals for each of the focus areas. And then we're going to see strategies on how to hit those goals. So the objectives remain the same through that focus area, but the goals change and the strategies tell us how we're going to achieve that goal. So we have 75 strategies, over 75 strategies within this plan. All of these strategies can be achieved within the next five to 10 years and they were verified again by the group of our internal team who I met with to ensure that we could achieve these goals within the next five to 10 years. And strategies that couldn't be achieved in the next five to 10 years, but were strategies that we maybe wanted to accomplish, were added into the appendix in the back. Strategies that were not feasible for the school district were then not included. So if you're like, why aren't we doing this in this section? We had internal conversation and figured that they weren't feasible for the school district to do at this time. A large and very important part of this management plan is elevating social justice. So there was a lot of conversation happening this summer about diversity, equity, inclusion, and the anti-racism work that's happening within the district. And sustainability really, really complements diversity, equity, inclusion work. And I don't see them as two separate things. I see them as an interwoven, they're interwoven initiatives. And they kind of both sit under this idea of social justice. So we can be sustainable if we're not thinking about diversity, equity, inclusion. Because again, climate change impacts our most vulnerable populations. But again, we can't talk about diversity, equity, inclusion unless we're talking about sustainability, because people's lives are impacted differently by climate change. And if we're not talking about how we're going to include certain people in sustainability work, we're just completely missing the boat on the conversation. So I wanted to elevate that within this management plan. And so what I did was we have a whole diversity, equity, inclusion section that is very much complementing the work that's already been done by New Hampshire listens. But also, we talk about curriculum development specifically with sustainability. So how are we going to talk about sustainability when we talk about curriculum development? And there's a whole chapter of this management plan that talks about that as well. In terms of next steps, so obviously I was only here for about eight weeks, so we've been thinking about what we are trying to do for, for the future. And so I put a next step section with some appendices to help us achieve those. So the first one is stakeholder engagement. I was working virtual all summer. I don't know if I mentioned that. So I was working in Dayton, Ohio all summer. And so I didn't get to have the one-on-one conversations that are truly very important to get people to buy into this section or buy into this plan. So part of the management plan, which Maggie's already been working on, is including more voices and opinions to kind of make any edits necessary to this plan, to make sure everyone feels included and bought in so that they can continue pushing this plan. Because if we don't have stakeholder buy-in, we're not going to have anyone continuing to push the school board and the district to think about how we're going to do sustainability. The second is not included in the plan, but it's a conversation that's ongoing. Maggie has done tremendous work over the last several years and is planning on stepping away from the role in December. And so we are, talked a lot about how we can continue to get a coordinator in this position who can push this plan. Because if we don't have a coordinator or someone driving the boat, we're worried that it's going to just kind of fall through the crack, cracks. The third is an internal action plan. So obviously, you have 75 strategies and they can feel like a lot and pretty overwhelming. So what the internal action plan does is it kind of helps you figure out, okay, which strategies do we want to accomplish in year one? And which strategies do we want to accomplish in year two? And this action plan does not need to be a laid out plan kind of like this. Could be as simply as an Excel spreadsheet that kind of just lays out when your goal is to accomplish all of these strategies and by what date. And a lot of this action plan also helps us determine what's feasible. So maybe if a project isn't financially feasible in year one, it might be financially feasible in year five, after you've accumulated some money through certain energy efficiency projects. So the action plan is kind of leads that and the coordinator will kind of guide that process. And the last is annual reporting to the board. So each year, someone will come to you all and kind of talk about our progress that we have made in this management plan. So overall, that is the sustainability management plan for you in a, in a short amount of time. I just want to thank everyone for the wonderful experience they gave me. This fellowship was super concrete in helping me propel my career in sustainability. It was huge in helping me land in the position I did as a sustainability specialist. And I really loved meeting everyone, even though I could only do this all virtually, the experience was huge and, and the people were amazing, even if I only got to meet them over Zoom. And with that, I will go to take any questions.
Excellent. So thank you, thank you for the presentation. Board, there's, there's a lot in the report as well. No, if everybody had a chance to take a look through that. Questions for, for Meg? Go ahead, Denise.
Not a question so much as, and I mentioned this at the last board meeting, just I was so impressed with how thorough the report is. So thank you very much. It's amazing and just has like so much great, the suggestions and so much great information. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I enjoyed working on it.
I had a question. You looked at a number of other districts, I don't know what the camera is, a number of other districts' plans. And I wonder if you had a chance to see how their implementation went? Where, what tactics or strategies made their implementation more effective or where they fell short?
That is a great question. I was going to say, so I met with, and I kind of put it in on a second slide, my apologies if I did explain this process. But after we showed kind of the five districts that we really liked their plans the best, those were, two were from Colorado, one was Oregon, one was from Maryland, and the last one was from Kentucky. They all kind of had different ways that they designed their internal action plan slash implementation. A couple of them, I have to say, three of them ended up hiring a coordinator. The coordinator worked with the internal team to kind of set more like a schedule in terms of like budget and then timeline each year and to, in order to achieve kind of the different strategies. One group ended up hiring a teacher, which I thought was cool. So they did like a teacher on special assignment model. And so the teacher kind of, I went with all the teachers, other staff members and parents, and established the internal action plan that way. And then actually asked to extend their time to stay on as a coordinator. And then the Kentucky school did a little bit differently for implementation. What they ended up doing was hiring two people. One was an educator to do more curriculum and then one was more of a facilities person. And basically what they did was each year, they would, they kind of had more of their like action plan laid out in their plan. But then every year, basically, they would go through and then reevaluate and kind of edit the document. Their document was a very like live thing, I would say. And so each year, they would go through and like kind of pick the ones that they wanted to accomplish. And then if they didn't accomplish it, they would like move it to the next year. But they had a cool model because theirs was very curriculum focused in one section by having just a teacher doing that and then a facilities person. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I know that comparing the different goals is kind of apples and oranges, but is there one of the goals or themes that you think is the most important or the most impactful for us to think about?
Ooh, that's a great question. I don't know what, because like I said, there's 75 like strategies. I think the coolest thing that you could accomplish is like off the top of my head, and maybe this is kind of carrying on from my conversation I was having earlier today if I work with, talking about energy. But you can use some really cool things to get your school to be, or the whole district to be essentially carbon neutral. Because what you can do is, and I talked to a couple of people about this, is you can go out and procure energy, so every year you can buy energy involved, or I think you all buy energy every couple of years. And you can choose to purchase that energy from a renewable supplier. So if I choose that your energy supplier to be renewable, then it makes you like just 100% renewable. It makes that because you chose a renewable your supplier. So that's a really neat thing to accomplish, but like is a really big impact in terms of like carbon emissions. The other tactic is a really good goal that has the students behind it, was the waste audit. So you all started kind of a pre-startering process, thinking students from high schools that right before COVID hit. And it would be cool just because after talking to some people within Durham, there's a lot of real events like right now in the region. And so doing the waste audit, if you could like get pictures of that waste, it'd be a really cool thing to accomplish and also contribute on its community and with what students were interested in it.
Great, thank you. Others?
Meg, we're really sorry that you couldn't be visiting during the, the change in seasons because we really were trying to get this report lined up so Meg could be here and experience the change in New England foliage. So this is, you know, not as good, but the presentation was amazing. You did a great job tonight. Thank you so much. This is the first time we've tried recorded video and then live question and answer. This is really interesting, so thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. I wish I could come. I have made a joke with Maggie. I tried now three times over to New England and for some reason, New England doesn't want this Midwestern girl over. So yeah, unfortunately, I tried a new job, I didn't realize I couldn't take any vacation time, so I was, I'm not allowed to take vacations for some time, so I couldn't get any time off. So my apologies on that. Also wanted to follow you, but just maybe some other time, I'll find my way up there.
You're welcome, Annie Dunn.
Thank you very much, Meg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else to add, Maggie or Sue? All right, great, thank you. All right, Al, I don't think there's a finance committee report tonight?
Just that we started, you know, this reminder, the 28th is our half-day budget workshop. And so the administrators are in the process of putting together our books that we'll get before the meeting. We made sure that any position that is being asked will have a sheet on it and a write-up on it, CIP as well, and a multi-year CIP. And so I would strongly encourage everyone to pick up your books early, read through them and come with questions. It's a real opportunity to do some discussion.
And Sue or Jim, when do we think the, the books will be ready?
The books will be ready by the end of the workday on Monday.
Monday.
Monday of, actually, because that's next, next week, correct?
The workshop is next Thursday.
Yeah, so all right, so Monday, okay, thank you.
All right. And then if I can, for other, if I can put you on the spot, Dan, with regards to the school board association?
Yep. Worked out the logistics with help from Jim and Michael. Was able to attend the School Board Association Delegates Assembly. The, the one, new resolution that we discussed submitted by Keen in response to diversity, equity, and inclusion passed. I'd say overwhelmingly, I don't know the counts on the votes, they were mostly voice votes. For the second year in a row, there was an attempt to remove our resolution on guns.
Really?
And, I mean, just, again, just a quick observation, it appeared maybe 15 or so delegates supported removing it, but ultimately it was overwhelmingly supported as a continuing resolution. And the rest was fairly routine. Several of the submitted resolutions were not moved forward, never came to vote. So, yeah, those are the, those are the high-level takeaways.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, thank you for attending. All right, and on the unanimous consent agenda, it's all policies. Are there any of those that anybody would like to separate for discussion? All right, seeing none, I will move the unanimous consent agenda, which is for second read and adoption of BEDH and BEDHR and BEDHR1, EBB, Echo Bravo Bravo, and GADA.
I will second.
So motion from me, second from Denise. All those in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor, those policies are approved. All right, so that brings us to the substitute pay proposal, Jim.
Thank you. I know that this became a passionate topic of Toms in particular over the years and, you know, what we're experiencing right now is the dissonance between what happened pre-COVID and what's happening post-COVID in terms of pay. And so I did And so I did, I did the analysis and sent it off to the negotiations team, and indeed we were on the low side. And not only that, but as I was talking to Brian, we really came up with a completely different paradigm on how we could do subpay and increase, increase the pay to do that work. So we, we, our analysis, we were on the low end, $80. The surrounding districts were mostly higher than us, I think there was one district that wasn't. And so by shifting to an hourly rate of $15 an hour for a single day, you bring the effective daily rate from 80 to $105. And then the second tier of substitutes that we use are doing multiple day work and they were being paid, I think it was $95 or $90. And by going to a $20 hour rate for that group, for that group of people, you bring the effective rate for subbing for the day to $120. So, you know, if a substitute is available for an hour and that's all we need, we are now in a place where we could have that person come in for the hour and away they go. The way substitutes typically are used in the district, and I see, you know, right now Rebecca's still here, if she has a substitute coming in, she's going to find places to use that substitute in other ways. So, you know, one hour could easily turn into a full day as the needs arrive, arise in a given building. So I think the new model is more flexible. I didn't change the, the long-term substitutes with certification who might be coming, covering a maternity, because they already work off a per diem rate, and so there was no need to change that. So I think the new model is, will be much more effective and attractive to substitutes, so I recommend the consideration.
I think it's great, and you know, to think that bringing it up to 15, you know, how much lower than 15 it was, I mean, it's almost startling to think what hourly rate we were working on before. I totally support this. I just think in the future too, whether we consider raising it annually, because what happens with subs is that, you know, you set it and then you kind of forget it, and it stays that way for like, you know, sometimes a decade, you know, a long time. And if you could like say, okay, if everybody's raised, if you're raising like generally salaries by 3% or whatever, raise the subrate 3% that year, and so you're continually keeping up, keeping up the value of that payment rather than let it erode and then having to do a big jump at some point. So I think, you know, if we could do that, I think, I think it's fair, and I think it also, then you don't have to come up with a lot of money at one point for a big jump.
Makes sense to me.
So I'll move the adoption of these two rates.
Second.
We have a motion from Tom and a second from UC. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the subpay proposal? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. All right. The next item is the 360 process for superintendent evaluation, and I apologize, due to a poor handoff between myself and Wendy, we did not get it into the packet on Friday. So you have a hard copy here and Wendy will send you a soft copy tomorrow. Given that we haven't had a chance to look through it, I'm not asking that we consider this tonight, also considering the time, I think I'd rather just defer this to the next meeting for discussion and action. So if you have any, if you have any comments on the documents in the meantime, please send your comments to Dr. Morse, and we will be able to discuss those at the next meeting.
So this is a question, my understanding is this document has been approved as is by the Guild, right?
I'm sorry, we're not quite there yet.
We're just.
Well, this is the, the evaluation superintendent.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I know the Guild does not approve this yet. All right, so, so yes, now, yeah, now moving on to the MOA with the Teachers Guild. So I guess Dr. Morse, I'll let you introduce this one, please.
So we entered into this negotiations with the Guild with optimism and also concern. So, you know, last year's MOA became a point of contention, and both groups wanted to make sure that the issues that caused the tension last year didn't exist in the new one. We're really focusing on the health and safety of our staff and students. It is a process where as we go through time and we make, have conversations about changing it, we'd engage the Guild in that conversation. It also has a pretty high expectation that the Guild will maintain all of their lessons, five through 12 electronically. So if a child is out for any reason, could be flu, could be pink eye, could be COVID, the lessons are available, and so that's a pretty significant change from last year. The, the other piece is on the nursing section. As Catherine reported tonight, our nurses are really doing a fabulous job in addressing COVID, offering services that no one would ever thought, think that they would be offering, including, you know, in-house testing. So that language is there, we're watching their workload, that's, this is the message I'm trying to give you. You know, we're piling on in various places in the district, but at some point you have to recognize that it's, it's going to interfere with the normal expectation of, we've had in the past. So in this MOA, we said we would sit with the Guild after a month's worth of data to see what the impact is on the normal operation of our nurse's office. We also had a number of teachers who were voluntarily giving up their planning period. So teachers in the, in the five through 12 area in particular, K through four have planning as well, but not as frequently. The principals are having an incredibly difficult time finding substitutes, part of it was pay, part of it is COVID. And teachers were voluntarily giving up their planning periods to cover for other teachers, which is wonderful, but it also interferes with their ability to get their job done. So we thought a token thank you for teachers who step up and do that of $25 is worth our, our collective thank you to, to teachers who are doing that work. And so that's included in the MOA. Other parts of the MOA are really very typical to what you've seen in, in the past. It's about protecting our staff and students, it's about masking up, it's about social distancing. And I really just would close by saying, again, I am so impressed with the willingness of the Teachers Guild to work through tough issues with us, and I think that this resolution with the Guild is, is worth your approval. It has been approved by the teachers.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 21, 22 MOA with the OR Teachers Guild.
A motion from Denise and second from Brian. Any, anybody from the negotiations team care to provide any additional color?
I thought it was well, well negotiated on both sides. I think we both saw the, what the, what we're trying to do, and I think we all got there to a very pleasant agreement. So I think we learned from last year and we kind of put that into, into our process for this year, and I see no issues with it.
Thanks.
I have a question, like, there are times in the agreement where, let's see, like, for example, number 11, you say, we'll seek guidance from DHHS and ORSC, the COVID plan. There are times when you say you're going to get, be guided by both DHHS and our COVID mitigation plan. Would there ever be a possibility those two would diverge and there'd be like a different standard DHHS and from our?
Yeah, I think that's a real possibility, Tom, but the reality is that our plan is specific and it's, it's localized to our situation. And what we found last year a lot is DHHS and the CDC, their guidance was generic or often inconsistent internally, or they'd make an announcement one day and they'd change it the next day, which has happened as recently as this fall. Our COVID plan that you've adopted as a school system is comprehensive, it's, it's, it's specialized to our environment and better than, in terms of clarity, what we were seeing from the national organizations. So part of what I was trying to do in this is to make sure the community, so this, our plan lives on our website, community would be able to see what it is that we're doing and what the metrics we're using. And, and it's a stronger plan because it's focused in on Oyster River needs and not national needs. So it is possible, we would look at what the conflict was and decide whether that conflict favored going with this, you know, DHHS or favored us. We have a continuous governance committee meeting every month, and we, any changes to this would result in that conversation with the Guild. I think that the plan we've put together in this district for this school year is far superior to anything that we're seeing nationally. So that's why we kept on going back and saying, our plan, our plan, our plan. And I will tell you, that's not happening in other districts because our plan is, is really crystal clear this year and, and it's not open to interpretation.
Other questions or discussion? We have a motion and a second already, so all those in favor of approving the MOA with the Teachers Union? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. MOA is approved.
Thank you very much, folks.
All right, and that brings us to policy.
Yep, so we've got three policies for first read. The one comment I have is the school board's safety policy actually reflects current practice. So, you know, it's, it's a new policy, but it, it reflects what we're actually doing. Anybody have any questions about?
I just have a question about EEA?
Mandatory drug and alcohol testing, school bus carriers, yes.
It looks like the only changes in this were to add a reference to federal regulation and to change the title. But in the, changing the title to mandatory drug and alcohol testing, this policy is actually about a lot more than that. It talks about certification and medical examination and criminal background checks. So why are we changing the title?
That was the recommendation of our governing body in terms of the School Boards Association. So we don't have to change the title. It's just, that's what they asked us to do.
So I, I hear what you're saying, Michael. I mean, it is true that it talks about a lot more and, I mean, if it, I don't know that it.
It's really governed by the federal government. I mean, bus drivers are, they're randomly chosen on a regular basis to be tested and, you know, they have certifications, you have to keep up as well, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's not, that's not changing, that's just.
I think the, I mean, if I may, I think what I hear Michael's saying is the, the change of the title is somewhat misleading. It's too, it narrows the scope of the perception of what the policy is, much too narrowly. So, I mean, now that you pointed out, it seems as though maybe we revert to the original or broaden it.
I wondered if they wanted to remove the CDL certification piece of it, so something broader, simply school bus driver complacency or requirements would both remove the California driver's license piece and keep it broad.
Yeah, could it, could we, yeah, that's actually, school bus driver, what do you, school bus driver requirements, would that actually work? Because that actually is a good suggestion, I think.
Sounds good to me. Right? All right.
All right.
So, so we need a motion to approve these policies for first read?
Quick, quick question, Dr. Morse. The, on the background checks, I know state is really, really far behind on getting them back. This might not be related to this, but I mean, what is the policy is, I didn't get, I didn't get too in-depth into it. But if their background check doesn't come back, are they not, do they not start working until then, or do they have limited access, or like they don't get into the student information until that comes back?
The way that we operate on the background checks is every employment is contingent on that check, so it's, it's very possible that a check will come in after the person has started working. If we waited for that to come back, then we would continuously have the positions unfilled. And so the board knows, I faithfully meet with any person who has any record whatsoever and go through it to make sure that what I'm seeing on paper is not going to be harmful to kids, 100% I do that, I did it today. So I'm very.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. I'm more concerned about the delay that the state's been in getting these background checks to us and how it affects our ability to do business. So.
We haven't let it stop us because we let, we put the contingency in. The only practical way we can do it, they are sometimes months behind, and then all of a sudden we'll get, you know, a telephone directory envelope full of them, so, yeah, it would be a major issue if we waited.
Denise?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, let me read it on this line. So we've got CB, I mean GBCD, background investigation and criminal history record check, EEA, which we are now just titling school bus driver requirement, and EEA, school bus safety program for first read.
A motion from Denise, second from Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor, those are approved for first read. All right, any other committee updates?
Actually, I do have one more thing, Michael.
Sure.
So as far as for policy, what we are going to be doing is, as we go through our policies, we're going to be reviewing them for gender pronouns and basically taking out like he, she, and putting in they. And so that will be happening because obviously we have a lot of policies. So that change will take place, you know, as we move through policies, we'll be checking the language as we go through each one. And there may be some opportunity for Wendy to kind of go through and do possible batches of them, but there's a lot, so it'll take a while.
Do small changes like that have to go in front of the board? They can just?
That's not considered substitute.
That would take a lot of time.
That would take a lot of time, yes.
All right, other committee updates? Any public comment?
Michael, could, could I read another piece that I got from a family? I should have done the first part. I, I shared with the board that I was going to write out a half dozen, you know, letters to people, that we had people come in from Singapore, the high school, we had people coming from Canada and so forth. And so I just chose a random six, and we did get a response, and I thought I would share it with you. Dear Dr. Morse, thank you for the warm welcome to the district. We are pleased to be part of this community. Moving to the seacoast, we had many choices for high school. Honestly, it was the academic ranking, the athletic offerings, and the collegiate engagement opportunities that ultimately drew us to Oyster River. We look forward to participating in all aspects. I am, I am eager to learn more about the PTA and parent organizations and to get involved. I look forward to meeting you as well. Regards, Bridget Blackman. So kind of cool, right? The kind of, why did people choose us from so far away? And it was very validating, and it was a really nice, it was nice to do it the old-fashioned way. You know, we wrote a note, we stuck it in the mail, she responded, sticking it in the mail, so the old ways aren't dead yet, guys.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Morse.
You're welcome.
You got future meeting dates, next Thursday is our budget workshop, and then our next regular meeting is November 3rd. We do not have a non-public tonight.
No, no, we don't have a non-public.
So I will request a motion to adjourn. Brian? Is there a second? Second from UC, all in favor? Seven in favor, we are adjourned.